All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll just send a quick word of prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings bestowed upon us. We just ask that you be with us tonight as we go forth in deliberation, there's little good things that will be pleasing unto you. Once again, we just thank you, you're great to have with us, and pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well called, all members present, thank y'all for being here tonight. Approval of the minutes for the meeting in December?
I approve of the several minutes.
Have a motion second, approve of the minutes for the meeting in December, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
And both can approve. Approval of financial statement for December?
I approve of the financial statement for December.
Second, have a motion second, approve of the financial statement, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Reports of the city department, fire department, Mr. Steven, I think you're gonna do that for Jimmy tonight?
Yes. Uh, yes, so like you're saying, Chief Huffman could not be here, he has, uh, Falter County Fire Chiefs Association meeting tonight. So he sent me his notes there, oh, sorry. Uh, so runs for last year, um, he told me, hang on, I can't read his handwriting either. Oh, 1,102 runs was his total runs for last year. Um, this year, so far year to date, he said he has 50 of them, as far as permits go, uh, for the planning, commission side on things. Um, five of them in December, year to date, for last year, that'd be 97 total. And then for January, he's had three of them already submitted so far for the year. Um, and training wise, uh, just normal shift training, they're required to do roughly 10 hours a week of training between all the guys. Um, but no external training at the reception.
All right, that concluded the report?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, planning commission? I don't see Mr. Todd or anyone here, I don't know of anything that they have going on, I know later in the agenda here that, uh, that they don't have a meeting in January, we'll announce that again, that, uh, not been a whole lot going on the past holiday season. Police department?
Not a whole lot, uh, still looking to fill the last position, uh, last guy away, hopefully I'll be able to have somebody next to me. Uh, and then, I'm needing to go ahead and get a bid for, begin, and, uh, the best thing that I've found so far is another big truck, it's up over there last year, and it's, they went up, but it's 4919. That's just truck.
So number 10 or 15 probably equipped it or more, depending on the prices of what that goes up?
Yeah, it'll be more than that. But I'm still working on just the price of equipment too, but I don't have that.
You have a motion to the person who's trading?
You already got that in your budget, it's in the budget, so it's allocated unless it's open that avenue, it's still there.
But I think he wants approval from the council.
But it's kinda, whatever y'all wanna do, I just.
He's going to.
Well, I appreciate that, I knew that we let him buy his truck.
Yeah, second.
Okay, we have a motion second, authorize Chief McNew to proceed with the purchase of a pickup truck for F-150 for a police department. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chief McNew, you're authorized to proceed.
That's all I have, once y'all get questions.
Thank you.
Sheriff department?
Yes, a couple things, uh, like, uh, Chief McNew, uh, make those. Uh, 107 pump station, Rick Bernard, we run into a problem, believe it or not, with bolts, trying to get the brackets and the, uh, panel in. Across the fingers, they're supposed to be done by the end of the week, okay? Uh, the only holdup may be because once we get everything set, then we got 50, uh, I believe he's, I'm not sure what he is, to come over and recalibrate everything, and then it'll be finished.
So we got the pump, we've got the brackets, that was.
As I understand.
Now we need bolts.
Yes.
How old is that pump, do we know?
Thirty-five years old?
Uh, yeah, it's probably originally, yeah, yeah. And the only other thing is, uh, the pump station at Fox Run, they're getting ready to re- redo that one also. And, uh, I forgot to ask Brandon, how, we've redone a lot of the pump stations, but I don't know how many are left. And I forgot to ask.
Humbards doing more than.
Yeah, Humbards doing all the work, yeah.
Councilwoman Maxwell, um, hasn't that pump out there, I know they're right, they're on Fox, Fox Run. Um, I believe it's on the other road on the other side of, hasn't that been on a reservoir pump already? A, 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 a temporary pump there, but I know out kind of in those woods there, there's an orange looking pump, it looks like what was out there, uh, in Councilwoman Bean's neighborhood.
I'm not sure.
And I, I, I hear something wrong, I don't know that that's what it is, I haven't really inquired much about it, 'cause I haven't had anybody really complain.
I have not heard about that, but I'm not saying it's honest.
Yeah.
I just don't know for sure.
I know it's been there for a couple years.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever that pump is.
I don't think that's been for a pump on the watch, yes, I'll go down there tomorrow.
If it's under checking, see, if it's right past the bend.
Yeah, gotta worry about it.
All right, then all you have on?
Just one part, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, street department, uh, we got Church Street strapped and Naylor strapped, uh, part of that federal grant was the, uh, adding of the backline chip runs, and we got some positive feedback. Uh, Naylor got accidentally back checked. Um, we will be working, I don't know when we will get the bids, I'm gonna estimate between $10,000 and $20,000. Between City Hall and 64, uh, the sidewalk class. Uh, we agreed to do that a few years back, and Federal Highway Administration and state's been very lenient, but we're gonna look at that. Uh, so we'll be working on that. I'll let you know when we get a bid ready for it. Uh, parking wreck, um, Terry was at, I believe, basketball tonight, so he did send me some notes. Um, baseball, softball, and basketball signups open today, today, and they will close on February 28th. Uh, basketball is open to three to four-year-olds, baseball and softball is open for five to 15-year-olds. Uh, registration forms can be found in the lobby of City Hall or online at cityofbologna.net backslash parks. Uh, forms can be dropped off at City Hall or mailed in to P.O. Box 188, Bologna, Arkansas, 72173. And, uh, Jay, I wanted to make sure that I made sure and let everybody know that the Bologna app is a great way to keep up with all that. Uh, there's a link there that you can go use on that to register for baseball and softball, and we'll push out reminders about any important information that may be going on in there, and any street closures, it's, it's a good app to have. And I think that is it on, on the parks.
Have you heard anything on the grant that you're working on?
I haven't heard anything on it. I know y'all were talking about it. Yeah, you know, and I know y'all had that caveat in there, 'cause they didn't get to the fundraiser, and it goes away, so.
Yeah, I haven't heard of it yet, I do.
That's not, if they're get the cracking. Any public comment? Anything? Uh, on announcements, uh, I'll start here with a little bit, um, once again, I remind everybody of the Bologna app, how important that is to download and have it. Basically, reminding you two here, I was asked to remind you on my notes about the registration for Parks and Rec. And one other thing, we have had a few calls from people about these small advertising signs that had popped up all over subdivisions and stuff, hocking track services and wifi and everything else, and remind everybody that those are not allowed, um, under code, and, uh, I've been asked to have code enforcement take a look at those, so.
Are we gonna give a little bit of leeway time to get them picked up, these companies, I guess?
Yeah.
And if they do get picked up, they come by, where, pick them up, Street Department, City Hall?
Street Department, it's not a state, it's a street department, so.
So are we contacting those businesses?
I'm sorry.
You're talking about little signs, like the beacon thing, and.
You're talking about that, yeah. Talking about signs within the city streets?
Yes.
Are we contacting those businesses, or?
We will. Like I said, our, we don't go out looking to cause problems that we've just had several complaints about.
There, there are quite a few of them popping up, though.
That's what I've been told, but I haven't looked at it. All right. Department recognition, Ms. Lacoste, me.
Thank you, Mayor. So in January, we always recognize the police department, of course, it's, there's National Law Enforcement Day on January 9th, so, uh, we're very fortunate to have the men and women that are here protecting us, and so we just want to say thank you, and, uh, we appreciate all that you guys do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chamber of Commerce?
And the Chamber of Commerce has sent out their membership renewals for 2025, those are $65 each, and it's also $65 for a new member if you'd like to join, or 25 for an individual. And our January luncheon was well attended, we also had our 2025 election of officers. The president is Jackie Fox, vice president Cynthia Hanks, treasurer's myself, secretary Landon Runyon. And we will have our annual awards banquet, it's called Let's Mingle, it's on Saturday, February 22nd. I put the sponsorship forms and the nomination forms in front of each of you, so y'all would have those, um, to nominate. Nominations are due by January 31st, we're about halfway sold out on the banquet, so if you want tickets, if you wanna just mark it on that sheet, call me and let me know, um, if you don't have my number, you can call Bologna Realty, when you press four, you'll get my phone, so. And that's the easiest way to get ahold of me. And our speaker's gonna be Drake Toll, and that's, a lot of you know him, 'cause he's a local here. And he's with the Party Animals Savannah Banana Organization out of Georgia now. And our caterer will be Vina Catering, and again, we're taking those nominations through January 31st, and we'd like to have all of you there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, planning commission, uh, once again, going through the agenda here, planning commission will not leave for January. Uh, moving on to old business, uh, ordinance 2024-3 annexation, Benny Dallas Road area.
How's it going?
Landon, how are you?
Doing good, you know, I better because as of today, we have an easement. And it's signed, we got an easement agreement, and we got a permanent utility easement signed by all the parts. So the easement will be over the Stiles property at 31 Appaloosa.
Uh, do we need to invite you in a second before we get into discussion on this, on that, since it is third reading?
It is the third reading on this.
Is that correct, Mr. McNew, do you agree with that?
Um, well, it depends, you know, the rules do allow for introductory remarks on page seven.
Okay.
So I would say he's in order to sway, uh, introduce what he's got there.
Okay. Would you guys like to see it?
Go ahead.
All right. You mean a circular, like, the three guys to look at, they gotta be filed, probably, with the county, so.
I think that'd be nice, I'd love to see it, at some point. These counties are just.
No, those are the originals, we just got them signed about an hour ago, or else I'd have you.
That's fine.
Any discussion? With the council members, any questions?
I believe the point of, or, I do believe the rules permit, the procedural rules for municipal officials permits a brief introductory remarks by the person presenting. Correct, before there's discussion, we would have to have.
All right, if you wanna, if you're gonna present the ordinance on the third reading?
I have, uh, emailed it to you guys, I have a print copy.
So is there a new ordinance?
No, same one.
It has the changes that we requested on the second, when we made that.
What changes did you make?
On section two, I think it was, about utilities and everything, like.
Right, right. And whose responsibility, who's paying for what, and that there's no, uh, maintenance of the road by the city, so we're gonna.
All right?
Yeah.
Reading?
The whole thing?
Um, I'll make the motion to read by title only.
Second. Have a motion second to read, uh, ordinance 2024-3, title only, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, all right.
Ordinance number 2024-3, an ordinance accepting the annexation of certain territory to the city of Bologna, Arkansas, approving the schedule of services to be extended to said area, and assigning such awards.
All right, you've heard a reading of the title, uh, questions concerned?
Make the motion to pass ordinance 2024-3.
I'll second that, so we can discuss.
All right, we have a motion second to pass ordinance 2024-3, um, we'll hold that, I guess, go for discussion.
Yeah, I wanna read, I wanna look at what he has here on the utility easement for, uh, Casablanca. So you said it's going across the Stiles property, which were the, lady and gentleman that was here last month, I believe?
No.
Next door to them.
Is next door to them, okay. Is that the ones that just bought the house not too long ago?
Yeah.
I, I talked to all of them, get their names, I'm bad with names and good with faces, so, apologize for that.
Sort of summarize while they're reading it?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Changes you made to it were?
One, that the city has no responsibility for maintenance of the road, that's private roadway. And then two, if I recall, we made, uh, changes regarding, it was, uh, what was it again?
Uh, the water and sewer was gonna be paid, if.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It would be all, uh, like, paid for by the landowners, and that was contingent, my big thing was the easement place, and it looks like you've got all that.
Sorry, that, that was back in, I think, November?
Yes. Uh, yeah, and police and fire services in there, and there should be no issues, 'cause the fires are already covering that. PD, I believe, we discussed that.
We.
Chief McNew said he couldn't patrol it, but he can answer calls of service.
That's right.
So you can call 911 and he'll respond, but he can't patrol the property.
That's right.
Is my understanding. Yeah, so.
So I'll be, I'll be real honest with you, I mean, I, I, I don't really, I don't really know where I stand as far as my position on this. I'm, I'm rarely on the opposite side of the landowners. I'm just real hung up on taking that property in, and with that private drive there.
I understand.
And I haven't heard much on that, that really gives me much peace about it.
Uh, the ordinance specifically reads that the city has no responsibility for it, uh, there, there's no obligation from the city to do any maintenance to that road.
I understand, and that's, that, that's what, I mean, that concerns me a little as well, because, you know, we're gonna be providing utilities out there, so if a sewer main breaks, or a water line breaks, that's, you know, then we're on that road, and, um, you know, I, I just, I just, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well, really. It just makes me wonder if it puts, if it puts the city in the best position.
I understand.
That's the only concern that I really have.
I don't have a good answer to that, it's a private drive, and it's gonna be maintained by the landowners, uh, to the best of their ability, and so, uh, that's all I can say as to that.
Now, do all landlords that have the easement across it, including Stiles and whoever's sitting here, they understand that there is a right of way given to the city on that, correct?
Yes.
That there can't be any building on it, but it's, I don't know what the footage is, Joe, you might know.
Ten, ten foot.
That's what I said, I think it's 15 foot total, so seven and a half off center, correct?
Uh, I believe that the easement's actually directed by the city engineer.
Okay.
So.
Does it say 10 foot in the easement?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other, the easement agreement sets out the obligations between them and the, and the Stiles, and it also further says, hey, you've got to abide by.
Okay.
Any state, federal, local rules, regulations regarding any of this.
My understanding will be after a year, we will take over, correct, is that how that works, fair?
As far as the.
Maintenance and everything, isn't it?
Starting period on it.
Okay.
About a year, I believe.
And I don't know if this matters, but Bologna Water runs down, all the way down Benny Dallas Drive to a, uh, hydrant.
The water's already there.
Yeah, that was one of the questions you guys had first time.
Yeah.
And that's a good time.
But the city will not be responsible for upgrading that if it needs upgrades ever, or anything, 'cause it's all private road and everything, so.
I understand.
Was that already agreed upon?
No, so y'all were gonna pay for the installation?
Right.
Of any, any services, get them moved up, now maintenance, that's a, that's Bologna Water.
No, no, yeah, on the existing line, that's not Bologna Water, I'm on that, I believe you're correct, but the city's not going to do an upgrade.
No, we're not.
They say that we need to go to a six-inch line down there, we're not responsible for that.
That's what the purpose of the rewriting of the ordinance was, and that was specifying that if there's gonna be any additional hydrants or lines, that they're splitting the cost of that as the landowners, and the city has no responsibility.
Correct, because when that line was put in, there might have been only one house down there.
Right.
And if you're gonna add four or five more houses, and it can't suffice the volume.
Yeah.
I don't want that falling back on us, no offense.
Yeah.
Never does it say that added in this ordinance.
It should be in that section two, right there.
What does it say, that the city won't be doing upgrades or, or maintenance?
I, I thought it, um, I mean.
I've got it right here, it says, "Schedule of services, police and fire services shall be extended to the area by the city of Bologna within the statutory, statutorily required three-year period after the date the annexation becomes final. Water and sewer services shall be offered to the annexed area by the city of Bologna within the same time period, and shall be provided there too upon payment of the cost of installation for said services by the landowners of the annexed area. The street known as Benny Dallas Drive shall remain a private roadway, and the city does not assume responsibility for the upkeep of such." I don't see anything that states that we're not gonna do upgrades later, or anything like that, if that's warranted.
Well, that, that wasn't something I was predicting to come up, that, or else, you know, we could have put that in there.
I understand.
I've been here four times, and I could have put that in there, if that's something that we wanted in, and so I can rewrite it if we need to, uh, to add that, if that's something you guys would like.
I don't know that we can predict maintenance, though, because, just like with any other water line, there's no way to know.
That's a gravity flow system, correct? Everything on gravity flow, there's no.
On that water line there?
No, on the sewer.
Sewer?
Sewer, it's gonna be gravity flow.
Sewer gravity flow.
So it shouldn't be any major issues, it's pretty standard, Joe, if I remember right, I believe it's a year's maintenance period, I mean warranty period. I think if I remember right, and I don't foresee being out any upgrades or anything, 'cause.
Yeah, I consider it on the water, I don't think it would be on us, I think it'd be on Bologna Water Works anyway.
Well, that, that's the water, that's separate from that.
Correct.
Uh, the sewer system, uh, you'd have to live in the city limits to hook onto the sewer system, so on the way, anybody else could hook on, they would have to come get in it.
Correct.
And it's a gravity flow, and that's a big plus, you don't have any, uh, wet wells, or.
There's no trash bowls, or whatever, okay.
No, no, so you should be okay on that. My opinion?
Oh, I agree.
I do, I mean, we're, we're installing it, right?
That's correct.
And section three has a blank on the ward, I believe it's ward three, is that what we figured out, it's gonna be?
Yeah, it's, I believe that north, west ward, I believe that blank, just 'cause I didn't think of it, my, my, y'all probably don't wanna make big wars.
Can I ask a question without going too far down the radical here?
Yeah.
It, it is probably more for the council, but, so if the water company is separate from us, we don't have any, I don't, I don't, yes, we do, and I may be wrong, I'm not any legislative authority over them, why aren't we guaranteeing that they're gonna provide services? Like I said, I know that's a little technical, that's just the way my brain works, and I follow that in advance.
The water's already there.
But the water's been there, so you run out the road, there's a fire hundred.
I understand, we're just guaranteeing that they're gonna, that we're gonna, water and sewer services will be offered to the, to the next area. You know, the council's saying we're gonna provide water, if the water company decided tomorrow that they wanna pick up those lines, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, do we have the authority over the water company to say, the city council doesn't provide water in a given area?
We can, at it, yeah, I mean, we had our calls to a given area, I mean, if you want, you can make the motion to remove that section of water.
No, I don't wanna do that, it's just a technical question, 'cause I get, I get different feedback on different things, and so it was just a curious question.
Yes, ma'am?
I was just gonna say, I've already talked to the water company several times, and they have had no problems with, with doing that, and so, um.
All right, further discussion, council member?
I do post, post up, since this is ordinance.
Want to, I'll call for a vote on the, uh, document ordinance 2024-3, Steven, I'll start, and then you, um.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
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 Ready?
Yes.
My?
I'm gonna say present, I guess.
Okay, uh, five, four, one present, uh, ordinance 2024-3 for annexation of the area Benny Dallas Lane and Park. All right. Congratulations, you helped by the process.
Yeah. Fine.
Get those, uh, easements back, yeah, I'll get these recorded.
Oh, so you can take care of all the recording?
Yeah, I'll record it with the county tomorrow, with, uh. Yeah, absolutely, I'll send it to the mayor's office and the city.
And you know that copies of all that too, right, as, I know, the copies of.
And they'll get all of it, they'll get all of it, yeah. All right, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies.
Y'all can still.
Make it five in a row.
Not as my own, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, you stick around too much.
Uh, next on the agenda is ordinance 2024-4, the contract with the Bologna Community Development Corporation, do believe this would be a third reading on that. Kind of leave all the technical stuff going on, uh, this would be a third reading. You don't wanna read the whole thing again, is that correct? All right, ready?
Ordinance 2024-4, an ordinance authorizing dealings with the Bologna Community Development Corporation. Whereas Stephen Craig has a vested interest in and currently serves as the chairman of the board for the Bologna Community Development Corporation, and is an elected official of the city of Bologna. And whereas Lacoste Bean has vested interest in and currently serves on the board for the Bologna Community Development Corporation, and is an elected official of the city of Bologna. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Bologna, Arkansas, section one, from time to time, the city of Bologna may use the services of Bologna Community Development Corporation. The city council does hereby authorize said dealings with the Bologna Community Development Corporation. The city council does hereby authorize said dealings with the Bologna Community Development Corporation. Section two, the city council of Bologna does hereby acknowledge the fact that Stephen Craig and Lacosta Bean serve as elected officials for the city of Bologna and that it is in the best interest of the city to have dealings with the Bologna Community Development Corporation on an as needed basis. The city council does hereby authorize said dealings with the Bologna Community Development Corporation.
Perhaps y'all have heard a reading of, third reading of that ordinance, I guess that would now be on the floor for discussion, correct?
I think I can give a motion in a second.
Shemaitz? I've heard it said, and I appreciate what Stephen, it's a well-written ordinance and I mean, spend a lot of time and effort. I understand the intent behind it, but it's also said that this is not a necessary ordinance. And so I'm living a bit torn. No, not passing because it's gonna cost us, the city, was it twenty-five hundred dollars just advertising?
It's probably not as much, this one's not as long as some of the other ones we've done in the past.
I know, I know they're expensive, yes. And if it's, if it was required, I think everybody, I think as far as council, we all realize that they're part of this group. If they would do business and they should abstain in the vote for that organization, I think we did that about a ordinance. That's just my thoughts.
I will, I'm one thing, I mean, we're erring on the side of caution.
Well, I was going to, if this goes to vote tonight, I, you know, I got to thinking after last month, I have vested interest in Bologna Community Development Corporation. My business is a metal, and I feel like if that's the case, I should be, because I benefit from y'all's promotions. And I would feel the same way if it was any other organization that was up here. I just don't, I don't think the comparison between the V C D C and like Lawrence Family Hardwood, I don't, I don't feel like it's a fair comparison. One is in the business of making money and selling goods and services, and the V C D C's not in that business. They're not gonna, you know.
Correct.
I appreciate what's trying to be done, but I just, if this goes to vote, I'll be joining you guys in recusal.
And that's the thing is the municipal law you said, it does not necessarily need on there just for transparency purposes. They said, put it out there, that way everybody's aware that we serve on those boards and on this council. And as Mayor Firestone said, with us discussing it over the last three months, I think those points have been made, you know? So it's not completely necessary to vote on, I agree. And if you're gonna recuse yourself, there'd be no point, you're gonna have to have a fourth to vote, I mean, I obviously wanna repeat myself. And I'm sure councilwoman Bean would as well.
And, you know, even at that, if, because, yeah, I mean, the mayor could be that fourth vote, if I understand municipal law on that. But, you know, I mean, he, I can't make him refuse himself, but he should refuse himself as well, he's a.
But if you refuse yourself, you know, I mean, that'd be a three for you.
Then, well, I mean, there, you know, I, I mean, I would, you know, the mayor could do what he wanted to, but I was gonna suggest that as well because he's an ex-official board member and like myself, his business is, is on the website. And rightly so, I think the V C D C's doing great work along with all of our other organizations. I don't wanna get into a situation where we're politicizing our nonprofit organizations, and I feel like we're on the verge of that. If, if there's something that the city can help you with and it benefits the entire community, such as the community garden, write up a lease agreement and let's do it.
Well, then, if the council feels that way as a body that we don't need it, then I'll pull it so it doesn't go up for a vote, if that's the case.
I don't think you need it for the formality in the first place.
Okay.
We understand that if, if that were anything that comes to us. You're affiliated with it, you ought to at that time say, I'm affiliated with this, kind of remind us.
I think the only thing, we just wanted to make sure that the information is out there, everyone knows so that there can't be anything that seems like it's being covered up or whatever can be said. We just want everyone to know that we are on the board, so therefore if there is ever a thing like the community garden, no one can say, well, they did it just for this person.
Right.
It's for everybody.
And that community garden thing would have, as we're talking about that as example, would have to come in my case, it would have to come before the council be approved, and then.
Hundred percent, it would have to be done by resolution with a contract, hundred percent.
Yes.
So if that's how the council feels, then I'll go ahead and then pull the ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash four.
All right, Councilman Craig, you're gonna pull ordinance twenty twenty-four dash four. I will applaud you though, I mean, with everything that's coming on, everything that you did air extremely on the side of caution.
This political age now, between state, local, national, you just gotta be careful.
I think you did, I appreciate you. I do too. All right, no business, appointments by the mayor for the planning commission, fire chief, police chief, and city attorney. For the city attorney slash prosecutor, Mr. Danny Rasmussen is retiring. Mr. Dustin Chapman is here tonight, he will be replacing him as the city attorney and prosecutor. Chief of police will be Brad McNew. Fire chief, Jimmy Hookman, on the planning commission, Bob Barnes will be replacing Ken Williams. Brandon Ayers will be replacing Brady Ziffle, and Patrick Hegelmann will be replacing Tyler Walker. Also, reappointments to the planning commission for three-year terms, Trey White, Glenn Willhite, and Todd Bean.
I move the approval of the appointments.
Second. I believe you ought to include the sewer committee on that, please both of you.
Okay, and I don't have a list with me.
Let me think here.
Go ahead. Stevie Sellers, Roach, Al Sellers.
Uh, Mr.
David Philo.
Yeah, Philo, Mr. Philo.
Yeah. Sewer committee does such a good job under here. All right, we have.
A little.
Yeah, a year later, she does. We have those appointments as well as the sewer committee.
I have motion.
The appointments.
I'll second the motion.
Have motion second to approve those appointments, all those in favor, second to the saying aye.
Aye.
All right, appreciate it, hopefully people do a good job. Okay, approval of the additions and deletions for twenty twenty-two. What we had in July, we, we had the audit identity all in July, we've been working with the auditors. I believe it was November when we finally got to this section, we're just now getting into you. But I'll read these additions and deletions. The deletions here is a twenty-two police vehicle. Let's see, police, another vehicle, Ford Explorer, these are additions. Land, twenty-five acres on North Mount Olive that was donated by the Weaver family. The street department was a Kubota K Series track evader. Police department was a twenty-twenty-one Ford pickup, police. City park, excuse me, was city and land, the five acres across from baseball and softball. Equipment was a tornado siren that was put up there in the street department. Let's see, we'll do the deletions next. Two thousand and nine police equipment Chevy pickup here, I do believe. Let's see, twenty-twenty-two police equipment. It was a Charger, I do believe.
Charger.
Yeah, reading across here. Twenty thirteen police was a twenty-four fourteen Chevy Tahoe. Police equipment was a twenty-fourteen Chevrolet Prius. On the street side, that was a trade-in, that was the old Kubota excavator. All right.
I can't believe they're getting rid of that two thousand four pickup.
Yeah.
That's been around here a long time.
Been around. I'll entertain the motion to approve it.
I'll entertain your motion, we approve that.
Second.
I've got a couple questions, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, because I, this is starting my third year here and this is the first time I've seen this from twenty-two, obviously I, I wasn't on this council twenty-two. In fact, half the people here wasn't on the council. Is this, does this have to do with our audit, or is this more for the county, for the assessors?
Anytime that you expose stuff under audit rules, under legislative audit, you have to have a, a addition and a.
But we, we couldn't finalize this in twenty-two because we didn't finalize our audit, I understand until this year, so that's why this is now.
We're gonna go behind.
We should have a twenty-three because we just finished that, I believe, correct, Mayor?
That is correct.
So probably in the next month or so, we'll have one for twenty-three, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's, that's something we said down in the legislature.
Figure it out. Yeah, because they better make sure it all works under the book soon.
Exactly.
So there were resolutions and everything for this, this is just clearing our, clearing the assets off.
Yeah, additions and deletions.
Yep.
I have a motion second to approve the addition and deletion list for twenty twenty-two, all those in favor, second to the saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes stand approved? Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. All right, resolutions. Twenty twenty-five dash one, city council code of conduct, Ms. Councilperson Joe Knightwell. All right.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one, establishing a city council code of conduct. Whereas the mayor and councilmember servants are role, as role models for constituents and city and state. All right, I'm gonna get this right. Whereas the city council of Bologna desires to adopt a code of conduct as a guide for its members and whereas by adopting this code of conduct, the city council explicitly sets a civility standard to follow and recognizes the importance of trust invested in them by the public to conduct city business. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Bologna to adopt the attached documents entitled the city council code of conduct.
Good morning for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash one.
Second. I have a motion.
Discussion.
Yeah, we have a discussion. Go ahead.
All right, Councilman Maxwell, so I voted in favor of the city council code of conduct last year. But I find that there's been additions and deletions to this document. Did you hear that? And so I'd like to draw the council's attention, if you'll follow along, or if you want to, you don't have to. On page two, the fourth bullet point from the bottom of the page, it says, the city council demonstrates respect, kindness, consideration, and courtesy to others. The original document said during meetings, that has been removed from this document. And then throughout the rest of the document, the last two bullet points, the language conduct, action, speech, and written words has been added. You go to page number three, conduct, action, speech, and written words were added. Page four, the same thing, conduct, action, speech, and written words were added. Page five, the fifth bullet point was added in its entirety there. It's, it's talking about when members of this community come to speak to us, that stand there at that microphone, how we're supposed to show respect to those speakers. But it says this, and this is what I wanna kind of, kind of ask some questions about. Make no personalized comments in their speech and written words about other councilmembers and elected officials. So first of all, I, I guess my first question, Councilman, is it your intention to, to regulate the conduct, speech, and written words of councilmembers when we're acting in our individual capacity outside of here? Is that your, that's not your intention?
No.
Because I'd like to.
If you identify yourself as councilman Maydose, that's what I'm talking about. If you're saying I'm microdosing to everyone.
But the original, the original document specified that it was for city meetings. When you look here, it says, make no personalized comments in their speech and written words about other councilmembers and elected officials. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm a technical guy, if I said that Councilman Firestone has a beautiful smile, well, I just made a personalized comment about him, is, is that authorized? And then it says not to make those comments about councilmembers and elected officials. We're drawing a distinction now between councilmembers and elected officials. You know, and am I no longer permitted to call out any atrocities that may be committed by the governor or the president? Or, or a judge, or?
Your attorney.
Well, I mean, well, I mean, that's what it says, I didn't add this doc, this language in there.
I'm just saying you didn't do that, I did.
Okay.
But I'm not talking about, if you wanna, if you wanna talk about the governor, God bless you, talk about it, but not about here. I'm talking about civility amongst us, okay? And the civility of us within this community.
Okay, but not necessarily just inside the council meeting, when we step outside, our actions and our writings are being, are to, well, it specifically states throughout this, it's been added, speech and written words. I want to ensure that if I write something on social media or publish something in the newspaper or go to the six o'clock news about any of my elected officials or anybody else, that my First Amendment rights aren't being infringed upon. Did we let the attorney, the city attorney review this before it came out?
I don't know.
Would, and I'm respectful, would you have a problem if we, if we submitted it to, we've got our city attorney here now? I kinda feel like we're, I kinda feel like we're borderlining with just the language here. I, I'm for a code of conduct, I passed, I voted for it last year, I was hoping to vote for it tonight, I can't vote on it with the words in here the way that they are. I, I would really wish that, you know, maybe you would consider taking it down and letting, letting our city attorney redraft it to where, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but I believe that we can regulate speech within the confines of this council meeting. The mayor can say, we're not gonna talk about that, it's not a tremendous topic, that's YZ. I don't think that you can regulate what's written and spoken about outside of this public meeting. And I think we'd let that.
I, I'm taking this, if I may speak this second. I'm, I'm taking this, that the intention of this is that somebody, a public comment, somebody's at the microphone talking, they can talk in general, but not to call out an individual councilmember or.
Is that what it means?
That's the way I take it.
Well, if that's what it means, I would say that was an infringement upon their, the First Amendment and, and Article Four, I believe, of the Arkansas Constitution gives the citizens a right together and asks for a redress of their grievances. They can tell every one of us to go to the, to the, go jump off a bridge, go to hell, go to wherever, they, the public has the right to tell me that. And I don't want to take that right away from them.
I don't think they have a right to say that.
Well, they do.
I don't, I don't, I don't think they have a right, if they wanna come and make a, a public comment about a topic, they can talk to that, but I don't think they need to call out the councilmembers individually and try to put them on the spot or, or, you know, that, that's not right, I don't, I don't think you should have done that. And that's the way, I think this is intended, that's the way I take it. We cannot govern what they say, okay? We can govern what we say.
So is this, is this.
So if you don't mind, if you don't mind, again, it's, we are supposed to act civil, it says right there at the front of it. It sets a civility standard for us, right? So I don't want, I don't wanna go out in that hallway and Brady, and hear Brady out there, Joe Maxwell bald headed, he's fat, and all that.
Well, that would be inappropriate.
Yes, well, it's inappropriate, it's not civil.
But, but would it, would it be inappropriate if he said, I disagree with Joe's ordinance, I think Joe was wrong?
No, no, because that, that's just a generalized statement, okay? But now, if he goes out there and accuses me of stuff, of stealing something without being able to prove it, that's wrong, he shouldn't be doing that. Would you not agree to that?
Well, I do agree with that, he doesn't need to be telling lies on me. But I do think, you know, I'm not an attorney, we do, we have our brand new city attorney here tonight, welcome, he might be ready to leave. But, you know, if I was gonna make the motion on this tonight, I'm leaving it, it's, it's up to you at this point. I, I can't vote on it, I would, I would move, and I'm prepared to do that, that this be given to the city attorney to revise, make sure that there's nothing in there that's gonna infringe on councilmembers' free speech. that's going to infringe on councilmembers' free speech rights or the public's free speech rights, and then bring it back.
Or have we, has anybody made a motion on this yet?
Yes.
Or we just made the reading?
There's a motion in the second.
Okay. So what is the motion currently on the floor, then?
Motion is to pass this.
Pass this. I didn't make an official motion. I'm just saying that's what I would be inclined to do.
Okay.
What's will of the body?
Well, I mean, since we're discussing here, I lean towards, I don't always lean towards Mr. Maytoes's side, as y'all know. But I actually do on this one a little bit. I think it does borderline a little bit of your First Amendment rights. Now, within the meeting, I get that. But like it says, "Make no personal comments in their speech and written words about other councilmembers," you know, even in public. I get that. We're supposed to conduct ourselves accordingly. But I don't think you can tell me what I can and can't say in public. If the public doesn't like that, then they vote me out in two years. I mean, to be honest. And the part on there where it says, "Given appearance of active listening." Your definition of active listening and mine could be two different things. I'm listening to that person at the podium, and I've seen comments on Facebook where they're like, "Oh, he's just got his head down." No, my head's down because I'm writing notes. I'm listening to that person, but I'm just down taking notes of what they're saying. And to me, that's active listening, but to you looking from outside in, it may not be because you can't see what I'm writing on my pad. So I mean, I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Maytoes on some of these things I don't agree with that are written within the document.
All right, we need to get a feel for the will of the body.
I mean, if we want to table it and do more discussion and tailor it a little more, we can. I mean, that's something.
I think I would like to just see the city attorney just look through it, edit it. We can let him know, I think, Councilman Maxwell, his intentions is that we are all governed. I think last year's was fine. I didn't, I mean, some of the language is pretty ambiguous, but whatever. But I think it was fine. But I just need to, you know, and I made that comment last year that I didn't believe that it spoke to a lot of last year's discussion with a lot of my Facebook posts. And when I'm on Facebook, I am not acting in the capacity of a councilmember. And that hadn't been discussed tonight. But I think you can understand where I'm coming from when I read some of these things, specifically when it comes to written words. You know, I might want to write a newspaper article about the city of Valonia and the councilmembers. I have that, I believe I do. I believe I have a First Amendment constitutional right to do so. Now, being respectful and abiding by a particular code of conduct when we're within this building, as far as actions, I mean, if I'm speeding ninety miles an hour down Main Street out here, well, that's not conducive to a city official. That's not setting forth a good example. Should I be doing that? No. But, so I mean, you can get really deep in the weeds with this kind of stuff. You know, some of us up here may go drink a martini tonight after the meeting. Well, other people may have religious and personal convictions about that and think that person's not being conducive.
You're getting so far out there.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, there's lawyers and courts because people get far out there. I move that we table and give it to our city attorney to redraft.
Okay, well, but my thoughts again are, this is intended, that a person speaking to us speaks to us as a body and not individually. And not individually come in and just rip one person of the council apart. That's the way I take it.
But it does not say that anywhere in the document that pertains to meetings or the body as a whole being addressed as a body.
It says, "Make no personalized comments." If you're addressing a county council, you're going to expect, and I agree with that. That's the way it should be. I agree. I don't have a problem with it.
We've got a subsequent motion to pull this down and send it to the city attorney for review. I have mistaken on it. I'll second. Excuse me, I'll second. And motion second to pull this down and forward it to the city attorney for further review. Other comment on that?
My comment would be intentions are one thing, but words matter. And when we're dealing in the matters of the law, which is what we're dealing with up here, we're dealing with ordinances, resolutions, and we've got to make sure that the words are correct because words matter. That would be my statement to that motion.
I can agree to that.
Further discussion then.
Let's hammer on that point a little bit more. I agree with you. I mean, like I said, in the previous ordinance, if words, if what's written doesn't matter a percent, then we wouldn't have had to put in it if we don't maintain the string. That was discussed that we weren't going to, but that's not how it was written. So we had to determine change that so it was written that way. So I agree with that point.
We have a motion second.
To me, that's a good point. I'm with you.
All right, so we're going to have a motion second to table this at this time and send it to the city attorney for further review. All those in favor, say yes. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Right, congratulations.
Thank you. Attorney, your position is.
All right, resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash two, establishing rules for city council meetings submitted by Councilman Mr. Staley Craig.
A real quick brief discussion on that one. Exact same as last year. I did not submit any changes to it.
It's a yearly requirement?
Yes, the state law does require that we show some way either about ordinance or resolution, how we conduct business. That's the reason, just like we did last year. And to my knowledge, there's no changes in it.
And motion second, I'm going to go ahead and allow her to read it.
You're, since I presented it, I wouldn't feel good making the motion to.
The mic.
I made a motion, but I forgot it wasn't read.
You can make, you want to make a motion, read by title only, or?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to read by title only.
One second.
I have a motion second to read, resolution twenty twenty-five dash two by title only.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, resolution establishing the time of the council meetings, setting point of order in establishing rules for conducting council meetings.
I haven't heard a reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash two by title only. It's merely establishing the rules and stuff for the meeting. It's a state requirement of law, and that will be published as well where everybody can see. So any further discussion on resolution twenty twenty-five dash two?
I move it's approval.
One second.
I have a motion second to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash two. All those in favor, say yes. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and approved? Resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, allowing members to present and explain provisions of a sponsored resolution, ordinance, or motion before it is considered by the body for discussion submitted by Mayor Maytoes.
Introductory remarks, Mr. Mayor. So this, why I came up with this is, it has been standard practice around here ever since I've been on the council to, and I've brought resolutions and ordinances to this body numerous times, where the person that's presenting that ordinance or resolution or motion has ability to explain the meat. And I guess if you want to use the term sell the proposition to the rest of the body, the body may not know if they want to take it up. And we do not follow the Robert rules of order. But last month, when I was attempting to bring, and this is kind of what sparked this. Last month, when I was attempting to bring an amendment to the VCDC contract, I wanted to kind of explain the meat and get some background to what I had changed in there, kind of what was necessary and why I felt strongly and passionate about that. And I wasn't permitted that right. And so I do think that, you know, a simple motion, I can understand a simple motion needing a second before. But we're not, I'm not saying that we need all argument debated. That would require a second. But this would just give the councilmembers an opportunity to present, explain. And this isn't a comment from what we've been doing. We, on the annexation, we discussed that four times, four different months. It was presented. We even changed the document. No seconds, no votes until tonight. And I just think it, you know, it was an unfair practice, but I do think that this would, this is the first month of the year. It would just kind of set a precedent to how we do business. With that, I would move it's approval.
It's going to be read first, Chair.
I have to read it. I'm sorry. Didn't read.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, a resolution to allow members to present and explain the provisions of a sponsored resolution, ordinance, or motion before it's considered by the body for discussion. Whereas councilmembers are tasked with presenting and passing ordinances and resolutions, and whereas it has been a practice in the past to allow an author of an ordinance or a resolution to explain its provisions before a second and discussion was obtained, and whereas it may be necessary for the members and the public to fully understand the intent of a motion, resolution or ordinance so that an informed decision can be made on whether a motion should be executed and discussed. And whereas all members shall have equal rights of presentation, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Valonia, Arkansas.
All right, so for the reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, I have a motion for its approval. Have I made a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
All right, I have a second on it. Discussion on resolution twenty five, twenty twenty-five dash three.
All right, so Mr. Mayor and Council Staley, I think it's about to run all over the place. So I was doing a little research on this and reading along on it. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, which we just passed, states that we'll follow the city code of, let's see. It says that the city will follow rules or regulations set forth in city code, chapter two dot sixteen of the city council section. So when you look in two dot sixteen dot ten in our city code and ordinances under procedures, it states that we will follow the procedural rules of municipal officials booklet as Mr. Maytoes has stated earlier, not Robert's rules. And so if you get into that booklet, under proposing a motion or a resolution, it does say, we're forward here, and I'll read from it. An occasional brief introductory remark may preface a motion, but discussion or debate is usually not permissible until a motion has been stated by the mayor and is before the council for discussion. It is, or if it is desirable to have discussion before a motion can be formulated, this may be done by moving that this subject be considered informally. And so with that being said, we've already passed a resolution for this year that says we're going to follow these rules. It's in our code already that we allow group discussion. So I think it is a moot point to pass another resolution that allows for introductory remark when we already allow a brief introductory remark by the presenter.
Can I answer that? So first of all, yes, you are correct. I got that right here. It says, "Discussion or debate is usually not permissible until a motion." I'm not asking for discussion and debate. I'm asking for, and this is no different from what we have already done and been doing for the last three years, even on Councilwoman Bean's proposal on the speed limit change. We've talked about that several months. There's not even an ordinance here yet. And so it states that introductory remark may preface a motion, but discussion or debate is usually not permissible until a motion has been stated by the mayor. So nothing in here is asking for discussion or debate. We don't want to debate a topic without a second. The body may not be interested. What I'm asking is that I have the ability, and everyone else here has that ability, to explain where they're coming from on a resolution that may be more than a little thirty-second brief description because, as you understand, some of these ordinances, and we just got done dealing with the annexation for the last four months. We have discussed that and hammered that for four months without seconds. And, you know, whether that was within the rules or not, I don't know. I'm just asking that we, and I don't think this conflicts with the procedural rules for municipal officials because I believe this supplements it. There's nothing in here that talks about passing ordinances or anything like that. It's just talking about simple motions. And we're not asking to debate it. If you read the contents, discussion or debate is not permissible. It's not saying that the author of that resolution or ordinance does not have the authority or the right to present that and to talk about the provisions or the meat that's in that document.
So I'm not in agreement with that, Mr. Maytoes. That's what I'm telling you. I think this is a duplication of what we've already done. And that's what I was saying. It already says, under proposing a resolution, an occasional brief introductory remark may preface a motion. And your resolution says, "The person proposing any resolution, ordinance, amendment, or motion shall be entitled for a reasonable amount of time to explain the provisions." That's the exact same thing. That's what I'm saying is, this resolution is not necessary. We already allowed for that.
So was it unfair practice last month not to allow me to explain the meat of my amendment?
No, no, you did. But when you started reading word for word from the ordinance.
I wasn't reading word for word. I was, no, I was referring to the amended changes that I had put in there and why I put those in there.
That's not a brief introductory remark. That's a discussion and a debate.
No, that's an introduction to what's being presented. You bringing a point of issue with it would be a discussion and debate, which is what this paragraph states.
I brought a point of issue with it because you were discussing it at that point. You were reading it more and more depth. But that's in the past.
Well, that's what sparked.
I understand.
That's what sparked this resolution. I think that if we're not careful, we will rule ourself to death and no business will ever get done in this city.
I agree. That's what I'm saying. I think this is a duplication of the rules.
Well, but why then was I not allowed to?
You were allowed. You have. And I'm hard by it. I even said, yes, it's been customary. We do that.
Let's get back on, so it's hard to keep up with all of this.
Yep, it's hard to serve.
So we do, we're still having discussion. Any other discussion on resolution twenty twenty-five dash three? Any councilmember would like to add?
I'm doing a discussion.
All right, we have a motion in the second for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash three. So I guess the best way to make sure we get a good wheels of voice vote, and then, great. All right, all right, resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, y'all. Mr. Craig?
I'm a no.
Ms. Bean?
I'm a no.
Mr. Firestone?
I'm a no.
Mr. Rollins?
Mr. Deth?
As we're seeing both things, I'm a no.
Maytoes? Well, I'm the lone duck, but I'm a yes.
All right, so that resolution is failed to pass. Moving on to resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, recognizing the equality of all councilmembers. I could notice in that, I guess. She goes, you go ahead and read it.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, resolution recognizing the equality of all councilmembers. Whereas all councilmembers are duly elected by the majority of the electors, and whereas all councilmembers are tasked with many duties, including but not limited to fielding complaints from citizens, writing and passing ordinances, resolutions, budgets, attending city meetings, community events, et cetera. And whereas all councilmembers are elected representatives of their constituents and therefore are active participants in the democratic process. And whereas all councilmembers, regardless of their political views, should be respected and treated equally by the mayor and other councilmembers while carrying out the duties of their office. Can we read all the rules?
I have to.
Hereby, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Valonia, Arkansas. Number one, the rules and procedure and code of conduct shall apply to all members of the city council equally. Number two, there shall be a uniform system to be followed by all councilmembers whereby complaints from citizens are to be fielded and resolved. Number three, there shall be equal time for debate and discussion between all members of council during meetings, and all members of the council shall respect that. Number four, when necessary for council to fulfill their duties, members of the council shall be equally informed of any business dealings, problems, concerns, et cetera, so that each councilmember can be well informed of the damage on in the community to better serve the constituents and protect the democratic process. Number five, the mayor shall reserve his right to withhold information from councilmembers so long as it is withheld from all councilmembers equally. Number six, all councilmembers shall recognize that the mayor presides over the meetings and is the chief executive officer of the city and as such has an equal duty to serve his constituents. Councilmembers should equally keep the mayor informed of any information that will help him better serve the community. Councilmembers should equally respect his chair during all meetings.
And you've heard a reading of resolution twenty twenty-five dash four. I have a motion. We have a second. Have a motion and we have a second.
Was there ever a motion?
I don't think there was a motion.
I think I made a motion.
I, I didn't, but I will. Um, this is, there's no got you here, um, this is to me supplemental to code of conduct, um, just stating that we all recognize and understand that all of us are equals up here. Um, if one, if you, if I know something that benefits another council member in his ward, uh, you know, as long as we're within the confines of the law, obviously, that we won't be, you know, play in buddy-buddy system, um, that there's a uniform system, so I, you know, I get a lot of complaints, um, I've been told to uh have everybody contact the mayor's office, I don't have a problem with that, there's other council members that get on Facebook and they're going to the department heads, they're saying, so, I'm just asking that, you know, we're all on the same page, we're all equal, we're all trying to work towards the same thing and uh benefit the community and working together, so that's, that's where the spirit of this is at night, and I move it's approval.
Have a motion, Mr. Mayto, to for approval of twenty twenty-five dash four, and I dare say.
We have a second for discussion for clarification.
Second?
Second.
All right, have a second, uh, so we have discussion on twenty twenty-five dash four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you look at the code of conduct on page three, the top of the point, it says all members of the city council have technical votes, no council member has more power than any other council member and should be treated with equal respect. So that's basically what we're talking about in this uh proposal for our, for the resolution. So, I mean, it looks like, again, we're being repetitive to this, so-
But we tabled that.
But we tabled this one, so, would we be okay with tabling this until we approve this to see?
I don't have a problem, they can all be mixed together, we'll take pieces from, um, there are things in this that, uh, you know, the code of conduct doesn't necessarily allude to, but in some aspects, that's why I said I do believe that compliments, and we're still under a code of conduct that we passed last year, um, and that phrase is in there, it's word for word, but um, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I, I just, you know, it's a new year, uh, we were all sent here by the citizens of Valonia to to work for them and to serve them, and um, you know, if there's a system in place that the mayor wants us to follow to field complaints, such as call the mayor's office, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I don't hang out at the, and I'm just using as an example, I don't hang out at the street department or police department, I don't tell the chief what to do, it's not my authority. Um, but at the same time, I wanna make sure that, you know, I would think it's fair, it's not fair to the citizens, um, for one or two council members, if, you know, to get all the inside information of the dealings on of what's happening in the community, while other council members are excluded from that information. And so that's all I'm trying to do, is let the playing field, um, and that, and specifically, yes, the equality part is in there, but the parts of, you know, like there should be a uniform system to be followed by all council members, I know I contacted the street department at one time, uh, the, the head of the street department about something that was non-city related, and his response to me was call the mayor. And, you know, I wonder if the rest of the people on the council gets that same response, that's all. And I know we're not, I'm, this isn't meant to govern the street department, I'm just using that as an example.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So, yeah, that is, exactly, there is a play, a, a, a procedure already in, in place, is my understanding. If a citizen has a complaint, yes, they have every right to talk to a council member about it, that's what we're there for, we're their voice, hundred percent agree. But as a council member, you need to file the complaint properly and we've shown it before, the yellow forms in, you know, in city hall.
That's the first I've seen one, I've been-
I've gone it up in here before, it stays in my binder. I've gone it multiple times, saying, if you have a complaint, call Kelly, right, you all heard me say that a hundred times, and Kelly's threatening to throw me under a bus, right, because of doing that. Um, there is actually an email you can email your complaint to, um, it's, I just drew Blake now, what is it, D N J?
City Hall.
The City Hall, at cityofvalonia.org, you can call City Hall, um, you can call your council member, but the purpose of the yellow form has to be to offer documentation, that way if we keep filling the same complaints, there's a record showing that this pothole has not been fixed, or the drainage ditch has not been cleaned out, whatever it may be.
So, do you have those yellow forms?
No, they're in the, miss, the city clerk's office, if I get a complaint with a citizen, I'll actually walk in there and fill one out myself.
So, y'all?
And it goes, the city clerk hits it, she writes the department head or whatever place it needs to go to, and they get that, that form, when they get it completed or whatever, they've got the spot for their remarks or actions taken, and it gets filed. So that way, if you wanna know what happened with the lift station at Bernard, right, if the form's filled out, then you can go back and look at it at any point in time, that it's been documented a thousand times that this lift station has not been repaired. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, now, has there been times in the past where the mayor has said, hey, if you don't mind, will you take care of that, 'cause I'm busy with other things? Yes, there has, and I have, but, you know, done that. Uh, where he said, hey, will you contact Matt and see if you mind working with him and getting this taken care of? Yeah, I'd love to, right? So, that does happen.
So what is the uniform system that the mayor, who is the CEO of this city, wants us to follow when all of us have complaints?
Call mayor, call office, we'll fill the empty.
When I get a call, uh, from a, a community member, I, I listen to them, I, I listen to their complaint, and I tell them I will go make sure that the mayor's made aware of that. I don't, because outside of the council, you know, we don't have any power, we can't, I can't say, well, I will get this fixed, I'll take care of it. So, I listen to them, I make sure that I understand what they're asking for, and then I bring that information to the mayor for him to take, um, action on.
And I've always given my complaints to the mayor, 'cause that's what I've understood him wanting to be done. If it's a better process to come down to Kelly's office and help someone fill out a form or tell them to go to Kelly's office, I don't wanna overwork Kelly either, but if that's the process, I just think, you know, all of us-
The paper trail's important, in my opinion, you can always call back on it.
And, and in my, the best way, you know, when, when I bring that to the mayor, then he can go to the, to the department head, because he's, they're also version them, and if something they can deal, it shouldn't even come to the council. But if there's no resolution there, then it comes before this body and as council, we say they're making a decision on it, that's the way I, that's what I'm saying.
And the intent of this is just to make sure that we're all following the same system and we all understand this, our, everyone's goals, to accomplish what we want to accomplish in that, you know, one council member's not got all the insights.
And if I can speak to that too, I will say, first of all, we get complaints or concerns from citizens, not just in our own ward, 'cause our responsibility is to all of them, we're elected by all of them. And, but, like the street department, I can't call them and tell them they have to do something. So, the responsibility is to talk to the mayor, the mayor will then see if it's in the budget, if it's something we can do, and then he's the one that contacts the street department. So, when I've talked to Preston about things before, he has said, I will talk with the street department, see what we can get done, if that's not what the citizen wants to hear or whatever, to the answer to their question, you can have them to call me. He has never said, tell them to call the mayor, or just tell them to call me in a condescending or any kind of way, other than a helpful way of, if that doesn't resolve their question, have them to call me. So, in that, I feel like we're all getting the same answer, we're just maybe taking it different, because when I was told just have them to call me, I took it as a helpful, if they're still not satisfied, have them to call me, where it sounds like you were taking it as a, I'm not gonna answer, you have them to call me.
No, that's not the way I took it, I think that the mayor's came here to the city council and has told the council that that's what needs to be done.
He says it every week, yeah, you gotta probably call me.
But respectfully, Ms. Bean, when you had a culvert, I believe it was a culvert in your street, uh, or, or in your neighborhood, that was broken, and someone was complaining on Facebook, you said, I'll call Matt in the morning.
I talked to Preston about that.
But you said you, you said on Facebook, you called Matt.
Right, but Matt, Matt will tell you when you call him, that you need to call Preston.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's, that's the intent of the resolution.
All right, we've got, we've, you've had a discussion on resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, you have a motion and a second, y'all wanna table this or you wanna call for a vote?
We have a motion to table this until we get the reading on the code of conduct, and some of this, as we said, may be already in the code of conduct.
You know, I would substitute that to just give this with the code of conduct to, um-
Okay, that's my motion, give it to both of them.
Yeah, give both, yeah, to Mr. Jackson. And uh, let's, let's do, let's put on here, yeah, that's my motion.
What if you want one?
This gentleman, what, what I'll say to respond, what, my preference moving forward is to do all these things and write an email, um, because, um, my understanding is that I will always be here, in fact, most times I will not be here. Um, so, the better way to do it would be, be to issue a written, a written, like a one-page memo about that, then I'll, they'll circulate it back so you all have it, then you can debate whatever I say, um, and I'll, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll be around as needed. Um, one thing I know I'm gonna have a concern about, code of conduct, everything, is, is I haven't heard anyone talk about what is your, what is your rule, what way to enforce it, you know, if, if you accuse somebody of breaking this, you know, one thing to remember is that the six of you together, you don't have any authority over anybody else on the, on the commission, on the city council. You answer to the voters, you don't answer to, to the other five. Um, and so that, that's my first concern, is you, you can pass rules of conduct and behavior and equal treatment and everything, but if, if, if it, you know, even if there's a blatant offense to this, then, then what? You know, what, or, what is the discipline of that? Um, and if there really isn't, and you, you all, that's why you all sit on the same, the exact same plane, um, you don't, you answer to only the voters, you don't answer to each other. So, in, in that context, that, that's gonna be, I, I know one of my concerns, and I, again, have, not even having read this, this proposal.
That was a big discussion last year, Mr. Mayor.
You, you can, you can sign, uh, something that's called a pledge to say, uh, I, I, I promise to the voters that this is how I'll, I'll try to conduct myself, um, and uh, for, for whatever that means, you know, um, but uh, but, but there, but there is no, no-no process, you know, you, you can't, the, you know, the four or five of you can't sit around and say, uh, we, we are, we are sanctioning someone else and, and do that, even, even if they just, just vanished and didn't show up for meetings, um, that would either be a malfeasance that, that the county prosecutor could address, or just, just something that, that their constituents might take that in exilation. But there is no, there is no process for, for discipline to somebody or on them.
We'd like both of these questions, these resolutions sent here in electronic mail.
Yes, yeah, that'd be fine, and I'll, I'll see if it's then. If we could, can we go ahead and send him the original one that we actually passed last year?
So they can-
That one and this one, so he can see what's being changed. The first copy did come, it was a, it was a model, it was a, meant to be an example from the municipal league where you can build a code of conduct off of, and we basically just brought it here and passed it. And all of that was in good intention, um, but uh, yeah, I think you need to look at the whole picture.
And, and, and like I said, what I'll do is just look for an email from the mayor on that, and I'll respond back to the mayor, or maybe respond to all, to everybody, but I, I have had problems in, in some other cities before where I'll get, then now, now I start getting six different email threads going, and I'll, I'll write a response, and then, then you'll write to me, and then, then I have to write, so, so I do, I do wanna keep it like as a, as an all discussion.
So, question on that, though, would that be violate any kind of FOIA stuff by doing so, since we're outside of a meeting and we're discussing something that would be potentially voted on?
Uh, if you all gathered up at, at a restaurant or somebody's house or something like that, then it would, but, but a written, a written thing is, is the purpose of FOIA, but that, that's, so, if you ask me the question and then I respond to it, then all of that is certain FOIA.
We engage, debate with one another.
If you have a documented trial, yeah, it's FOIA, yeah, that's-
Okay, I just wanna make sure we won't violate any of that.
Yeah, no, that's-
By doing, doing that.
That's, that's what's specific, is why we do that, is-
Joe, you have a motion to table this and send it to the city attorney, that, right? Have a second, I'm gonna, all those in favor, say that I'm saying aye?
Aye.
All right, um, and everything said, I guess I'll entertain them.
Um, real quick, Mr. Mayor, speaking of attorneys, um, will you see that the city clerk make sure that municipal league attorneys know of our new attorney?
They will.
Because I know when we email something to municipal attorney, they'll CC Dan every time, so that way he, he's not getting them.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I move your turn, second to adjourn.